The mayor did say that we were now in closed session and I didn't stop the tapes. But after the fact, I said all in favor, everyone said aye. Everyone said aye and no one opposed, which will be a voice of vote and I don't have to do a vote hall vote. But it's not on the tapes because I stopped the tapes when he said we're in closed session.
Okay then, it should say in here, it should say in here that he said we're now in closed session. And, but how could he say that if we had not voted to go into closed session?
But previously, we have never stated on the mayor, they say we're in closed session, it just says we go into closed session. And it's the roll call. And it says city council enters closed session at any time. The mayor doesn't say it, but in all the past years, we've had it. So I think it says city council goes into closed session. It never says the mayor votes.
And listening to the tape, the mayor did say we are now in closed session.
Yes ma'am, and you always say that.
Okay.
Washington.
That should follow the vote. We can't just throw it to, we have to do our ayes or our nays prior to that statement.
Which we did, it's just the way I, we're in closed session, I just put the city council goes into closed session, I had that. It's always been that statement. And it's not on the tapes, you gotta do the vote hall vote. I stopped it when we were in closed session. And that, everyone said aye, so I just closed, so I didn't have to do a vote hall vote.
Correct, and that a vote hall vote was not taken, a vote was taken. So, I would recommend that just the vote hall, we delete it out of that particular paragraph, just take it out because the vote was taken. In terms of what happens first and what happens second, the code of Virginia clearly states that you can't go into a meeting until there's a vote. The vote was taken before we all went to that. So departments of the open meetings act specifically such as 2.2 Dex 3712, say that I have time, I did say we have a pass, 2.2 Dex 3712, haven't met, and I quote this up like, "A, no closed meeting shall be held." So basically, the vote did happen, and the meeting was held, the vote was taken, so departments of the open meetings act haven't met. I would like to also say, thirdly, that before I arrived here, council did take verbatim minutes, and council will wait for that in terms of this summation of what occurred in the meeting. Perhaps that might be an issue, that council was a body to like discussing itself in terms of the return to the verbatim minutes to eliminate any type of concerns. To further address council's willingness to discuss concerns in terms about it's not being on the tape, and discussing that particular issue with the clerk of council, the tape is a backup device. You can see that she actually takes notes and she pours the votes on a piece of paper, and then that's how it's transcribed. So the actual transcription is really done by hand, the tape is a backup. If we went back to verbatim minutes, it would eliminate the tape inside. So it's something that you all, as a collective body, need to consider perhaps society. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's on the third call. Third call. Yes. Okay then. Do you have a question? Thank you, may I ask? Is there motion to the 10 minutes? Do you have a more? Second.
Public hearing on appeal of architectural review board denied of a certificate of appropriateness of property addressed as 303 High Street. Background information. Dr. Carter's application on October 30, 2014, were bronze status formal. The meeting was held on November 12, 2014, of which the applicant was not present. The waterproof storm windows match the distant color of the window sashes, not the bronze color storm windows requested by the applicant. And appeal received by the clerk of council on December 9, 2014, the same color of the blue which was mentioned in their appeal vote, in a separate issue when a judge moved the application to meet on October 30, 2014. Is Dr. Carter present? Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand before you in this month's Black History. As a very proud property owner in resident Petersburg, Virginia, and first African American to come to this country. I chose to live in Petersburg because I did love to support home and rich history. And I thank you for my coming today to the public hearing. At the latter part of October, I did apply for storm windows to be put on my home, which is at 33 High Street. I had four buildings in bronze, and I had ordered, I had made gutters and other things for my home in bronze. I was denied that by the executive review board with the claim that they wanted these storm windows on High Street to match the sashes. I applied that there were many homes that did not have that standard in place. And when I mentioned that to the legislature review board, I was then asked, "What of those homes?" So while you said my group hasn't made a difference, I think it does. Because if they're paying attention to my group, but didn't know anything of the other homes on High Street, then what is going on? So I've given you a list of homes that are not following the guideline. When we enter High Street, 216 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 226 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 230 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 239 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 243 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 319 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 526 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 545 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 516 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 506 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. 510 High Street, storm windows do not match the sashes. I am simply asking for you to overturn that arbitrary ruling, so that I, as a property owner, can be too like every other property owner on High Street, any other street in the city. It doesn't make sense that some of these decisions by the public review board are arbitrary and they revive for some in bronze. And then, as a complaint, why not have the review board work business? Why not do something like have a pamphlet for citizens who want to renovate their homes and encourage them to move here, and then one else there? Why not involve local tradesmen who are leaving Petersburg right away and going to other places? Chinese people, people that are skilled in brickwork. They're leaving Petersburg and going to other places. People who had opened stores downtown are being deterred by some of these regulations that are not enforced for everybody. Why not do something that involves people who want to come here and rent their tax pay dollars when you put up citizens? This is what I'm asking you to look at. This is not fair, it's not ethical, and sometimes this review board just does not seem to appreciate what homeowners are trying to do. And this wants to demean you, it's not working with you, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Are there any questions from members of the council? Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Carter said that the pamphlet was available in the D and C design guide.
When I bought my home, it was nothing but nothing. And so whenever I tried to do something, it's always kind of a surprise we got you. If you actually go to the planning commission, sometimes it says, "It's okay, let me find out as a volunteer can." So if you work with a realtor, you give a pamphlet out, if you had, if the group had a reasonable information on colors and things to do, and sort of kind of jumping out, you know, we can share back to working with you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thanks, I agree. Sitting back.
I believe that we do, I mean, it's so bizarre. And that we reviewed Ms. Carter's request of his cancel. Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. President Platter, Captain Morgan, filed out of court.
I'm glad I'm here. Different applications and reasons of the same.
Was there a pressing timeline?
Any application can resubmit to the Architectural Review Board, but you cannot submit, resubmit the same application to an applicant amended application. And there was, there's no revision timeline? He goes with the timeline.
Ms. Carter, would you be willing to re-submit the application for better than specified timeline for current concerns?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
One of my issues is that the executive review board made the visit to my home in October of the color of my pamphlet. This is the same person that told me they were going to deny the color of my storm windows. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And that's why I asked for that. Now, I don't mind if they did, but the same people are going to be making the same arbitrary decision that I have a problem with, that is why I come to do it, city council comes to help me.
My concern is someone denying you when you have to go to the board, if that's what happened on the day. However, Ms. Peters, can you shed light on this issue with us, please?
Good evening, mayor, mayor of the council. I am not privy to the actual conversations that took place at.
I'm asking you to respond to that conversation.
Good evening.
With respect to Sebilla's new application or whether to revisit the appeal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought President Platter can answer that question, I apologize. So your question to me, could you repeat it again for me?
Question, you shed light on whether she can resubmit her application or utilize it, even though the preservation planner said that she could not. I believe the council likes a clarity whether or not she can or cannot, and why she cannot be exchanged with the board and forgive. Do you get this question?
The application was decided. And when an application is decided on by the architectural review board, the decision is final. At that point, the applicant has the right to appeal that decision to this by the city council. And then, the city council has the right to send it back to the architectural review board to reverse the decision of the architectural review board, the one she signed with the architectural review board. Depending on what your decision is, the applicant then can appeal your decision to the court. The application that has been submitted cannot be the application due to that. She just need to go through the matter without the application and give back the appeal for the architectural review board.
Well, I appreciate your response, but you did answer my question. So council can make the decision to have her stay in the application, resubmit it back to the architectural review board.
Yes, you can do that.
Thank you. Is there a motion over the floor to have her application resubmitted to the architectural review board? Councilor Morgan, will you? Any other questions?
I had a motion, but it was not the one you just made. My motion, I'd like to make the motion that council approved to overturn the obvious decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, let's get through it. We appreciate your support. All right, most of the debate has been properly settled. Madam Clerk, we call the roll call, whatever you all want to call it today. Thank you. Aye.
Gadsden, aye. Gadsden, aye.
Aye.
Gadsden, aye.
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 Motion is passed, thank you, Dr. Carter.
Thank you.
This formerly industrial building has been on the market for some time and has been determined to be two larger residential operator and obviously will require interior rehabilitation and exterior changes. It probably is subject to renewed approval of any exterior work by the architectural review board. Request also to an addition as permitted by the Department of Historic and House Penthouse Units. Ms. Peters.
Good evening again, mayor, mayor of the council. The question of consideration this evening is for a rezoning that occurred back in 2011. It was for the Tignis optical building. At that time, the ordinance was adopted, it was passed through the planning commission as well as city council to have multifamily or the option of multifamily with commercial and accessory uses. The zoning was industrial and it was changed to the PUD for the planned development. At that time, there was a restriction on the property that it be developed as market rate unit only. Since that time, the development did not take place. At the time, the applicant, for whatever reason, did not secure the financing to do the renovation in the building, to develop it for the multifamily, or execute the option of having a mixed use building. Today, we have before you a request of an applicant who would like to amend those conditions that was previously paid place on the rezoning of the property. The first condition was to increase the number of units to 220 units, up to that number, so 220 being the maximum, as well as have 10,000, up to 10,000 square feet of commercial space in the building. So they're asking to delete the option where you do all residential or some residential and some commercial. And they're asking to do residential with the commercial, therefore creating a mixed use building. In addition to that request, they're asking to change the name of the development project as it was referred to as the Tignis building before. In addition to that, they're asking to be able to utilize the low income tax credit to finance the project. And they're asking for a 90% low income tax credit and 10% of the units being provided as market rate for a mix of 90/10. The comprehensive plan has not changed with respect to that neighborhood, that community. In fact, we have a number of plans going out there, where this particular community is the subject of that plan. And it talks about rehabilitation and development and doing single family on the infield lot, not at the Tignis building. It talks about that building being retrofitted for a mixed use style development. There are exactly three plans that talk about the same thing, as well as the comprehensive plan saying that it is definitely a building that is good to be used as an adapted reuse project for mixed use development. We did discuss this project with that development review team, that's given all requests before they come to the planning commission, and we discussed the retrofitting of the building and the fact that they would have to go through a site plan review, as well as in order to do the addition to the building, they would have to go through the state's district DHR for review for tax credit, as well as the local architectural review board for approval as the property is against the local, in a historic history. I've been working with the applicant for about eight months. When the application first came in, it was 100% lot type. There was one of the middle market rate unit available in the development. And I told them that I didn't think that was going to work for us, so if they go back to the normal way and come up with, you know, crunch their numbers to see if they could come up with a better mix. And so they came back and they said that the best that they could do in order to make the property viable was the 90/10 mix. This case was heard before the planning commission, and the planning commission did vote to the 97 to 0 for it to be financed with the low income housing tax credit. And just as I did for the planning commission, I'm going to ask if you will allow me to give you my recommendation as conclusion of the public hearing, so that I will be privy to all the comments that you will be privy to. The applicant is present and he has a presentation for you, as well as members of the development team. I am available to address any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, mayor, city manager, city councilman, of course, city attorney. My name is Daniel Woodford, and I'm with Fish and Day Investments. I'm here with my partner Chuck Trista, and one of our prospective investors, Mr. Rob Lou. And one of the people who wanted to go over is the project that we already cited about here at the 1015 Commerce Street building. As Ms. Peters stated, we are here to get approval for up to 220 apartment units that include rooftop units that you will see here in the presentation, and up to 10,000 square feet of commercial space. We are also here to seek approval for the development of this building. We invest, we revitalize the housing stock to support economic vitality. The affordability of housing is important to the economic vitality of Petersburg. And in order to bring residents back to the city and retain those still here, housing must be safe, affordable, and attractive. We believe that this project accomplishes all of these items here out of the comprehensive plan. Also, what we saw was in order to address this efficiency and reduce the housing cost for, which many of the studies that we have seen and that we have presented show that many renters here in Petersburg, it loves across the nation, or Redford, in other words, they pay more than 30% to 50% of their income towards rent. The city should focus its attention on increasing the supply of high quality rental housing, which this project will certainly be. It will be a class A building with all of the amenities that come along with a classic apartment building. And residents need economic opportunity in mixed income neighborhoods to encourage investment and stabilization of deteriorating areas. Again, something that this project will certainly address. This is 1015 Commerce Street today. As you can see, it's an abandoned building. It's blighted, there's a premium on the front, it's owned by the city, there's no tax dollars being produced by this building. It's an economic viable building, again, it's blighted in this area, it's pedestrian and all property values, and there's a negative economic impact on the city of Petersburg with this building in its current state. So what we are proposing as today, how the building sits today, what we're proposing for tomorrow is Commerce Street loss. Commerce Street loss, again, is a class A building, class A apartment building with commercial space or mixed use. It'll have quality construction throughout. Will have upgraded amenities to include branded countertops, upgraded fixtures, similar to what you see here in the pictures here, will have stainless steel appliances. Will also have a pool, fitness center, business center, and community room, which many classic buildings have today. And what we've also committed to do is to bring additional, or to bring commercial space, brand new commercial space into this neighborhood, to include office space, potential retail, potential personal services, or even carry out a restaurant. It's a little difficult to read, but this is our team as currently standing. As you can see, and you can see it there from your printouts there, that our team is very experienced. Our architect, 30 plus years of experience in light tech. Our property manager, again, extremely experienced with light tech. And it goes on and on as far as our team goes. Now, when we look at this as Ms. Peters stated, we look at all different types of development strategies. One of the strategies at board was we tried to address it exactly how it was in the PUD, and that is do all market rate markets with 200 units. And what we found, when we did our market study and plugged in those numbers into our market study, into our performance, we found that there's a potential five to almost $6 million gap in funding in order to get this building completed. That was the deal for it, we couldn't get that done. So we looked at using a mixed income, mixed use approach, and light tech was the viable way to get this property done because it brings in the initial capital in order to get the project back on the tax rolls and back in a productive building in the community. So the bottom line is here, Commerce Street needs light tech to be viable in order to get this developed. So why 220 and why light tech? Again, we did our market study, and we plugged that information into our performance, we did a sensitivity analysis from how many units we would need in order to make this project viable, to get the type of funding we needed in order to get this project done, and how much light tech, again, when Ms. Peters came to us and asked us to look at this and sharpen our pencils on our numbers, how much light tech could we pull out of there and make additional market rate units there? And as you can see, right here at the 90% light tech rate, let's just look at that stat, that column right there, 220 units. Our performance state said we could potentially get a development loan for $10.6 million. There's state historic tax rates available of approximately 5.2 million, federal historic tax rate is about 4.4 million. And then, here in the bottom with the yellow, the yellow line, the light tech brings in additional $7.6 million of capital in order to get this development done. Now, as you can see, the total sources that we are able to obtain for this project is about $28 million. The challenge for our team is that it's going to cost almost $28 million just to get the development done, from all the costs involved in order to get this developed. So 90% light tech is when this project begins to be feasible. At 80%, we are negative balance here in our budget, and at 70% it gets worse. For every 10%, approximately $500,000 will pull out of the budget. So what exactly is the need for workforce housing? What is it exactly? This is what Harvard says about the need for workforce housing. One of the things that we noticed is that, currently, as we sit as a nation today, certainly Petersburg mirrors the nation, we are at record ties with individuals that are red burdened. Individuals that pay 30% to 50% of their income towards their housing. And some people spend even more than 50%, and there's a severely red burden in that case. Again, Howard Harvard did a study on a national level. But we want to know what happened here, what's happening here in the regional level. And George Mason University actually did a study, they've studied the Richmond MSA. And what they found was, I'm going to say MSA metropolitan. And what they, what they found was, I'm going to say MSA metropolitan, uh, uh, statistical area, what they found was, they confirmed exactly what Harvard said. Harvard said, uh, that their, that their majority of, uh, uh, individuals are rent burdened, and they said the exact same thing, they reaffirmed it. In fact, they said significant demand for a four O rental housing between six hundred fifty to eight hundred fifty dollars a month is going to be needed in this area due to the types of demanding growth that's projected over the next ten to fifteen years. So what do people do? What if they were, so what, what the options for individuals today? Well, they either, A, pay the higher rent amount in our rent burden, thereby having less disposable income for the family, or they live in substandard housing. Those are the two options today. When you look at, uh, the class A properties across, uh, here are some of the class A properties that we saw in our market study, and you look at the amounts of rents that these properties, uh, achieved, nine hundred and fifty to nine seventy-five that, that across the board for one bedroom. Commerce Street loss, because of the, the, of the use of the light tech tax credit, you may be able to offer rents at six hundred and ninety-nine dollars for individuals that are looking for in one bedroom, and seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars approximately for individuals, uh, or families that are looking for two bedroom. When you calculate that all, and you look across the board on those individuals that are staying in those apartments, those types of apartments, if they are able to attain those types of savings, that's approximately six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in savings, uh, annually. That money comes back into the city of Petersburg, potentially, whereas currently it does not. Now, as we talked, discussed amongst, uh, the city staff and, and members of Petersburg, there, uh, seem to be a lot of concerns about, uh, using the light tech tax credit. And one of the things that we noticed is that the government, we feel, did an excellent job with this tax credit, with one exception, and that is the name. The name LI, in the beginning of that, of that, uh, of that acronym, low income, leads us to believe that the individuals that will be renting this building are somehow, you know, low life of some sort. Low income for us doesn't mean low life, it means that these, for, for light tech, it means that it, they're just normal everyday renters that, that are looking for, uh, a step up or, or, or additional housing selections that they could be, they could be proud of. Again, uh, one of the things that we found is that the, some of the issues that came up for us, uh, with, with individuals, uh, with, with the, with the concern for light tech is that, uh, there will be, there will be issues, there'll be, you know, the potential, uh, will attract criminal activity, maybe non-protectionary society. This will potentially be a magnet for the poor. This will be a public housing nightmare, well, this project is not public housing. And it will lower property values. The bottom line is George Mason, a George Mason study reutes a lot of this, and all the studies that we have today have actually refuted almost all of this. The bottom line is if there are going to be issues, the issues are people related, and they're not related to income. If the person is, is, uh, falls in one of these categories, it's the person.